I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order on this 7th of October, 2024. Welcome, everyone, this evening. We have a relatively light agenda, but we have some nice things to talk about. So with that being said, please stand for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to add an additional item to the agenda. It will be seven, excuse me, 8B, and there'll be special comments. So 8B will be special comments. Any other additions to the agenda?
If we could move item 2F from the consent agenda to new business, please.
We have a request to remove from the consent agenda, item 2F, which is a request to accept $225,000 from the Department of Adult Corrections. We'll move that to new business. That'll be item number 7A. And then the original 7A will be 7B. And as I understand, the intent is to coordinate both items together so that everyone understands what we're discussing. Any other additions? Changes? Corrections?
Motion to approve consent agenda as amended.
Motion to approve, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Sure. Yes.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended has been made. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Approval of the consent agenda as amended? Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
So moved by Commissioner Vorbeck. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now comes the fun part. Whereas, the Lee County Board of Commissioners and the Lee County Parks and Recreation Department wishes to recognize and thank the volunteer coaches of the Lee County Parks and Recreation Athletics Program. And whereas, National Coaches Day is celebrated on October 6th every year, and Lee County Parks and Recreation would like to extend the celebration for the entire week. And whereas, the county commissioners recognizes the success of the Lee County Parks and Recreation Athletics, which resulted in over 2,100 youth participants and 200 volunteer coaches this past year. And whereas, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we wish all the volunteers and participants of Lee County Parks and Recreation continued success and encourage everyone in the community to support Lee County Parks and Recreation and volunteer for this organization because, without community support, the Lee County Parks and Recreation would not exist. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims October 6th through October 13th as Lee County Parks and Recreation Volunteer Week in appreciation and celebration of the valuable contributions these coaches continue to make in Lee County, presented this 7th day of October, 2024, signed by me and attested by the clerk. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve proclamation.
Motion's been made to approve the proclamation honoring Lee County Parks and Recreation volunteer coaches. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I can't say enough on Joseph Keel. He mentioned the fact that there's a bunch of coaches working right now with the young folks, so I appreciate that. So if we can, we're all going to get up there and get a picture. That means everybody's got to come around. Yeah. Yeah. Joseph, it's, you told me you have 100 coaches out there right now, so we wouldn't have been able to get them all in this room. So we, but we appreciate what they do. We appreciate all the sport that the Parks and Rec Commission does. And we're going to have a good time next year, once that athletic park is online, and we won't be parking on the soccer fields anymore to go to the fair and making it muddy, so it's going to be a great thing. We appreciate it. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, everything went to sleep here, is the second public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 Community Development Block Grant, and Ms. Kennedy is here.
Good evening, Commissioners. As Commissioner Smith stated, we are here to have the required second public hearing for our Community Development Block Grant application that we're submitting in just a few weeks. The purpose of this public hearing is to allow residents and citizens an opportunity to express their views concerning the grant application and any project details. The public hearing was properly advertised, and a copy of the ad is in your agenda package. At this time, I have not received any written comments, Haley or Jennifer, have you?
No.
Thank you. As remonder, CDBG program activities must meet one of three national objectives: benefit low and moderate income persons, prevent or eliminate slumming blight, or address an urgent need. The county will be submitting an application for $950,000 in CDBG funds in the category "Low and Moderate Income Benefit" to assist with the category of housing rehabilitation. The grant allows for 10% in admin funds, which would be $95,000, and the remaining funds will be going towards housing rehabilitation of $855,000. There's no required local commitment or funding being allocated by the county to the grant application. In your package, you also have a copy of a resolution that you all need to take action on after the public hearing that must be submitted with the grant application. In addition, Ms. Hall will be providing certified copies of the minutes from both public hearings to go in the application. The staff notified residents about the applicant intake process on both the city and county websites, and applications were available through Lee County Social Services, the Enrichment Center, the Community Development Office, and at the Town of Broadway. We hired a consultant to handle the technical inspections relative to the housing needs for the application, and they provided a summary report to us last week, which goes by the grant terminology and guidelines. The consultant reviewed 21 properties in the last two weeks. Those properties were houses that were referred from other programs like our urgent repair and/or individuals that directly applied once we placed the advertisement about the applicant intake process. Of the 21 homes, five were minor or non-need, six were moderate, and two homes that had, we had to look at, had some eligibility issues due to a recent death of the property owner, and the other property site had conditions that would not be conducive for the grant program. There were eight units of the 21 deemed severe. Five units need reconstruction, and three will be severe rehabilitations. Due to the budget constraints and the estimates we have for rehab and reconstruction, we are proposing three reconstructions with one alternate and two severe rehabilitations with one alternate. Alternates are required part of the application in the event something occurs with the main houses before we would get release of funds later next year. Another requirement that I had mentioned to you in August was there has to be a housing selection committee to review the inspections that the consultant handled. That committee met this morning. Pictures of all the houses that are being proposed were given to the group. The needs were discussed, and the selection committee voted to move forward with the houses proposed by the consultant for application. In addition, the committee had to have bylaws, and we have to have minutes, and we have taken care of both of those items today. A copy of the minutes must be submitted with the application along with multiple maps. Once the meeting was over this morning, we went to see our GIS staff, and they will be preparing a project map showing the houses that we are going to identify for the application. The houses go from Broadway to Tramway, so we did a good assortment across the county. I want you to understand that application development is truly a team effort. Tridell and I are working on preparing the narratives, along with Johanna helped with a few of the narratives. The GIS department is assisting with all the maps, and Lee County and city staff have provided community information for the narratives relative to data collection, environmental health, and public works infrastructure. The application will be sent to the state on Tuesday, October 22nd, to meet the submission deadlines via UPS overnight delivery. They don't allow for hand delivery, which I have done for many years, but they stopped that at COVID, so now we have to rely on our friends to deliver it and hope they do it on time. So I will, at this point, I will let you open the public hearing, and then I'll entertain any questions.
Okay, I will open the public hearing on the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Program Application Submission, and public hearing is now open. Instructions are quite simple. If you're for or against, please come forward, state your name as well as your address that you're either for or against the grant application. Anyone for? Anyone opposed? Going once? Going twice? I've now closed the public hearing. Any questions for Mrs. Kennedy? Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have any, thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
In the case that you had ended up with some extra money, would it necessarily go to the alternates that have been picked? Is that a possibility?
Could be, yes, sir.
Okay, so that they could receive it? They don't have to be a wholesale replacement kind of thing?
And say in the horrible world, multiple people fell out by the time we got release of funds. We do have applications in a kind of a holding mode, or we would do another applicant intake round. The selection committee would meet again at that time if anything changed, because we have to document that they reviewed any changes. It couldn't just be that we decided. We'd have to go back through the process.
Well done. I appreciate your, your presentation. I think it reflects your years of service.
Just a few.
Maybe eclipsing here in the future, but anyway, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Karen, my concern is, is unfortunately, with the recent hurricane disaster in the western counties, we're projecting building costs and supplies at today's rate. With the incursion of another storm in the southeast, we're dealing with higher costs. How are we going to be able to? Are projects going to have to drop off, or?
It may.
Okay.
That's a valid point, because if construction costs go up, and all of our contractors head west, and we have a hard time finding them, there will be conversations we'll have to have with the state. It won't be the first time that something like that has happened in the course of a grant application, but we'd probably get some extensions. Sometimes if you have project-ready projects, they have unobligated funds that we can go back in for, so that's true. We may be at that point, but I think the state allows for some of those contingencies. And we'd have to go through processes like amendments. And if the, if it got sky high and we couldn't do the three reconstructions and the two rehabs for the $855,000, then our scope would change, but we'd have to go through a process to change the scope.
Does that process involve this board?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This project will be hosted by you all, so every time we do anything that changes the structure of the project ordinance, everything will come back through you all.
I hate to be a stick in the mud with that question, but unfortunately, that's reality.
Absolutely. Well, I was concerned when we submit the application, what will happen to the money in general. But I know they have already allocated the money to us, but that doesn't mean the legislature might change their mind. So we will, in good faith, submit, and just have to wait and see.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to waive our policy?
Yes. Is there language, or can I just make the motion to waive our policy to be able to take action at the same night?
Motion been made to waive our policy to take action the same evening after the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, the next item is the approval of the Commissioner's application resolution. Do I have a motion, please? Motion's been made to approve the resolution regarding the Commissioner's application. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy, and we'll work with the future. Next item on the agenda is public comments. The individual, I have one individual, Alan Rumel, please come forward, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. Alan Rumel, 1001 Northview Drive in Sanford. I am a member of the Lee County Board of Education, but I'm here tonight on my own behalf, not as a speaker for the board. So I saw the county classification and pay plan on tonight's agenda, and I realized that that plan is not new, but it is the first time that I've seen that personally, so I wanted to just make a couple of quick comments on the record about that. I don't understand why the school system is told to be creative in recruiting and retention for staff by a board who pays their own admin and staff upwards of 50 to 100% more than the county school system for similar positions. Lee County remains the only county in the state that I'm aware of that has kept classified pay in the school system frozen since the 2008 recession, and it really undermines efforts to improve morale when the county is willing to set their own pay scale significantly higher than the county school system for those similar positions while wrongly claiming no responsibility to support school system staff. I say wrongly because North Carolina General Statute 115(c)426e says, and this is paraphrasing, that state and local funding sources must be sufficient to fund operating expenses of the public school system, and employees having pay frozen since 2008 is not what I would call sufficient. That's all I've got. I just hope that those things can be taken into consideration going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is old business, under D.R. Horton Utility Easement Requests, and our Assistant Manager, Jennifer Gamble.
All right. This request was brought to you back in February this year. This is for utility easement located on a portion of the property at the Lee County Athletic Park. This is to relocate the utility lines that are currently located on a neighboring property that is to house a future housing development that is being developed by D.R. Horton. So the request includes a few different documents. It includes a Duke Energy Utility Easement. It includes a Central Electric Membership Corporation Utility Easement, a work plan, and an agreement with D.R. Horton as far as the payment for the value of the utility easement. D.R. Horton did obtain an appraisal for the value. The valuation sheet for that appraisal is located at each of your seats, and we do have D.R. Horton here this evening to answer any questions about the easement. I'll open the floor to any questions at this time.
Questions for Jennifer? Commissioner Carver?
None.
Commissioner Lovick?
Is this going to be a same pole build, or side-by-side build? In other words, is Central MC and Duke, are they going to use the same pole? Double-circuit pole, in other words?
Yes, sir, that's the plan now, same pole, both utilities on the same pole, in the same easement.
Okay. I will do a comment, if you don't mind, this time. Also, I did, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, sir. Mr. Tom. Mr. Tom and I personally, we went in through the mobile home park, and I personally walked that right away with him. And for it to devalue our property too much, I don't think that's the case. It's heavily wooded, briars, things like that, and there's still going to be a buffer to hide those power lines, so that's my personal.
That's correct. They also had to perform a site plan update to the plans we have for the Athletic Park, and, you know, it shows a good portion of the easement area being located in the wetlands of the property behind where the walking trail is, so we don't anticipate it would impact any of the future development of the property.
Yeah, that's the same thing I saw, so thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
How much, how much land was it?
Let's see, it's 30 foot by 1,221 feet. So it's represented in the Exhibit A.
Yeah.
That's in your attachments.
Point 845, according to what's seen on the sheet here.
Was it any other easements needed for that case, too? Any private easements?
We've not been, we've not had any requests like that that have come to us.
Do they have to do private easements to make this work?
I'm not.
I mean, is this the only strip? Is our strip? Is there any private property that they're also going after for this?
There are surrounding properties that will also be a continuation of this easement and the utility relocation, so some of the neighboring properties are also impacted.
Do we know what those costs were, agreed to?
I do not know about the neighboring properties, Mr. McKay.
The neighboring properties, so far, have just been acquired through negotiation for the mutual benefit. We didn't have to do appraisals or come up with a purchase value for those easements at all. One of them is a property to the immediate west, and one is a property to the south of the park property.
Did you have to pay for, do you have to pay for those easements?
No, sir, I'm saying they were granted to us just mutual benefit. I mean, it helps, it helps everybody for them to grant us those easements.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, no questions.
And I will say, we have some legal restrictions on being able to donate property for less than the fair market value, and so that's why staff recommended asking for the appraisal.
Commissioner Sharp, questions?
None, thank you.
Okay. All right. No further questions? Do I have a motion to approve granting utility easements to Duke Power and Central Electric? Motion's been made to consider, or, I'm sorry. Motion's been made to grant utility easements to Duke Power and Central Electric Membership Corporation on behalf of D.R. Horton for the relocation of electric utility lines to a portion of the property located at the Lee County Athletic Park, and authorize the chairman to execute the purchase agreement easement documents and work plan as presented after notification to the deed of trust trustees. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving right along. Under new business, the request to accept the $225,000, Department of Adult Corrections, and I guess Angelina is going to cover this, or do I get Autumn? Both of you?
You may get a little bit.
Both of you work?
So, good evening, Commissioners. So I asked Ms. Smith to join me up here, because this was actually an application that was a joint effort between myself, Ms. Brayboy, Ms. Smith, and Ms. Parrish as well. So before you tonight, the request is to accept the $225,000 grant funding from the North Carolina Department of Adult Correction, also known as DAC, for Lee and Chatham Counties' reentry program. So is, the board may recall that you all approved the staff to allow us to move forward in establishing a reentry council on February 19th of 2024. And then on May 20th, the board voted to approve the community support services to submit an application for funding for DAC in the amount of $225,000. And this funding is actually on the behalf of Lee County and Chatham County. The state did not allow each individual county to apply on their own based on the population that we all serve. And so just a reminder, that reentry is working directly with DAC, the Department of Adult Corrections, for individuals coming out of prison. So it's setting up those services for individuals that have been incarcerated in a prison setting and are moving to our community. And so the population that Lee County serves and Chatham County serves was not large enough for us to apply for the funding individually, so we had to do this as a joint effort. And so we have been working with Chatham County in applying for this, this grant, and then on August 26th, we actually received notification from DAC that we were awarded that $225,000. So what you see in your agenda pack, package, is the award letter. It's the, also, the RFP application, as well as we detailed out the budget that we submitted initially on May 20th that DAC approved. I would point out that that application was done and approved for expenses that we projected to, to, to expend. However, that, that is kind of a fluid, and as the year progresses, as we establish this program, we're going to be working with the state as to what, what we'll actually use the funding for. But that, that, that funding is listed in your agenda packet. Right now, it will be one full position for Lee County. We have decided to use one of the initial, or one of the already established position titles that we have to really, as reentry coordinator, to really be that reentry case manager. So the budget, we listed it as the reentry case manager, but we're actually going to call that in our pay plan, reentry coordinator. It will also fund the reclassification request that we will have that Ms. Bray, that the individual that will be coordinating the efforts to take on those extra job responsibilities, as well as Chatham County has requested 50% of the position that they funded July 1st for their reentry program. The rest of the expenses are going to be broken out based on what we see the needs are. And so I'm not sure if Autumn wants to add anything to that, but tonight is the request to accept that $225,000 that the Commissioners approved us to. initially on May 20th that DAC approved. I would point out that that application was done and approved for expenses that we projected to expend. However, that, that is kind of a fluid. And as the year progresses, as we establish this program, we're gonna be working with the state as to what, what we'll actually use the funding for. But that, that, that funding is listed in your agenda packet. Right now, it will be one full position for Lee County. We have decided to use one of the initial, or one of the already established position titles that we have to really, as reentry coordinator, to really be that reentry case manager. So the budget, we listed it as the reentry case manager, but we're actually gonna call that in our pay plan, reentry coordinator. It will also fund the reclassification request that we will have that Ms. Bray, that the individual that will be coordinating the efforts to take on those extra job responsibilities, as well as Chatham County has requested 50% of the position that they funded July 1st for their reentry program. The rest of the expenses are gonna be broken out based on what we see the needs are. And so I'm not sure if Autumn wants to add anything to that, but tonight is the request to accept that $225,000 that the commissioners approved us to apply for.
I'm not sure if there's any questions. I can go a little deeper into the reentry council or if there's questions about what the money aside from the positions for. We're looking at, it's a reimbursable, reimbursable program. So some of these would be for looking at transitional housing components, resources working with CCCC and their programming for continuing education, GED programs, vocational rehab programs that the community college has. So that's what, a lot of that's gonna be, as well as other certification programs, helping establish a driver's license when the individual comes back out if they don't have a state ID or a driver's license. So really working on transitioning the individual from DAC. This position that would be coming on would be working directly between us and the prison going and setting up the soft handoff for the inmate, the justice involved who's coming back into the community.
One other, one other thing I would add to is that right now, this funding is expected to last for three years. We have been in communication. There's not, when we, we looked at this venture, there weren't a whole lot of established reentry councils, but we were able to reach out some, to some counties that do receive this funding and they have received it for multiple years. But right now, the expectation is that we would receive it for annually for three years.
Okay, thank you. Questions for either? Commissioner Carver?
I was concerned about the sustainability of the things you're talking about, three years with the DAC. You also identified, I think, the use of ARPA funds to help pay for things? And how long do you expect that that's gonna happen?
So that, that's based on the, the next agenda item, and it's actually not for reentry. But I can answer that question in, now or at the next agenda item?
It's okay with me.
Okay. And the other thing I would say, too, is the unique thing about Lee County is, because grant funding is always something that we worry and we concern with if we take on, what is that gonna look like if the funds go away? So the, the good news is, is this board has, had already established the work in the positions prior to us applying for the funding. And that's really what motivated us to apply for the funding is because we were actually already doing the work. We were, we were really focused more with, with reentry in the jail. This is more with the prison setting, but we have that fundamental foundation set up and established. And so the, when we, we looked at it, the reality is, is we have the staffing in place. Yes, we are adding a position and we'd have to look at that. But we do have the foundation of what, 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 what we're looking at moving forward already in place.
You're, you're actually leveraging something you already put in place, which makes a lot of sense to me. You mentioned the jail. How do you portion or equalize the request from the grant for the prisons and the jail? I'm sure we get more candidates coming out of jail than we do out of prison, fact of the county.
Sure. So housed in our jail is, is a group who's connected with DAC. It's called the SMCP State Misdemeanant Confinement Program. So they are actually part of DAC, so they would be able to directly access this, this position. However, with the renew program that we have and the work that pretrial does, we really work and the existing nonprofits and resources we have in the community, they would still be able to access a lot of the services and the referral process we use. There would just be some guidelines that we would have to look at internally as far as where the funding would come from. But everybody within the jail would have access to mental, the mental health resources and, and pretrial services and the things that we've already had established.
That, that's awesome. One last comment or question has to do with the way you're leveraging the nonprofits in the community. You already mentioned it in the last thing you said, but with the nature of the people that we have in place that we're paying for, you're gonna need a lot more assistance, case manager level, et cetera, outside. So are we doing a good job of going ahead and collecting the interest from the nonprofits?
So we are. Ms. Brayboy has worked a lot with the community on the reentry council, and she continues to reach out to local churches, nonprofits, and is pretty continuously expanding as word is getting out. I know that was something that after tonight's meeting and everything is, you know, sort of in, in the zone to move forward, we would want to have more community engagement, community events, that I know that I've received several emails the last few weeks from local nonprofits and churches.
That's awesome. Thank you. I appreciate the way you've put it all together. It's really good.
Commissioner Lovick?
I know you said two counties, us and Chatham, went in for 225,000. Do they have an equal split or how, how is the money's being split?
So they did not request an equal split. As a matter of fact, they were very conservative in understanding that we did the work for the grant, and they've just been very supportive. They said, you know, you are, we are the intermediary agency, and so they're just along for the ride. And so they've been very supportive when, when I say that they just asked for 50% of one position and a little bit of travel. That's, that's all they intend to request reimbursement. Now, moving forward, if that'll look like that, we can answer that question, but, you know, the, the intention is to truly work together to see if we can maximize our resources, both in Lee County and Chatham County, because that could equal cost savings.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Vorbik?
I would just say that I would, I was looking over the application and the RDP, RDF, RF, one of those, one of those three-letter words. And I know it has a budget amounts and stuff, and you said that those are kind of fluid. I would just caution and point out that of the 225,000, 140,000 of that is being used on salaries and travel and meeting and conferences, whereas only 84,000 of it is going to the people that you're wanting to help. It might be on the travel, meeting, conferences side, that's $30,000. Might need to lean that more towards the people that need the help more immediately than we do travel or, or conferences type things. But other than that, I think just trying to make sure that you're, you're using the amount of money to the best of its abilities to be able to help as many people. That's it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, so is reentry geared more toward post-release jail or the court system? Or you deal with the court system anymore?
So reentry from the RFP standpoint is dealing, Ms. Brayboy's gonna be dealing primarily with, when it comes to reentry, with probation and parole and with DAC. So it will be with the state agencies that are working to bring people into the community. She works a lot with the, there's a reentry officer now at the probation parole office so, whose specialty is having the probationers who are releasing out from, from DAC. I know that they have worked on some placements, transitional housing pieces, that's like a big one that they have really been working on. So she is a resource for probation and parole as well.
Doesn't seem like much money for, when you start dealing with, helping people with housing. But we'll take what we can get. Thank you. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, it's not. And, and to go to Ms. Vorbeck's, Commissioner Vorbeck's comment, it, it's really not a lot of money. And so I think the, the idea is to take this first year to really see how, how do we get the services to the people and what does that look like? So I think that absolutely, that is a very, very notable comment in the back of our minds is how do we maximize our resource and leverage our resources? Because counties that's been doing it for a long time, they pay for salaries, but really it's the community that supports this, these programs, not necessarily this grant funding and not necessarily the county. It's the community. It's all the partnerships. It's all the nonprofits that support it.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Are these folks released back in the Lee County or are they just in Lee County going back to other places? How does that work?
So they are released, the individuals we are working with are releasing into Lee County. So they are not necessarily coming out of Sanford Correctional, though. So they could be anywhere in the state, but their, their home is going, address is going to be in Lee County.
Okay. Will that be the same for Chatham County residents?
Yes.
Okay, we have an opportunity to accept the 220, 225,000 grant funding from North Carolina Department of Adult Corrections. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the 225th, excuse, 225,000. I've been on a weekend doing the Revolutionary War, I'm sorry. From the North Carolina Department of Adult Corrections for Lee and Chatham County reentry programs. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And again, on that comment, I've been discussing the 225th from a few years ago, so that was on the top of mind the whole weekend. Thank you. All right, next item is the Lee County Classification and Pay Plan Addition, and Angelina's gonna stand fast.
Okay, and I, I had Ms. Smith join me again in case you all had any questions. Has most of these changes, all three of these changes directly impact community support services? So tonight, I'm stepping in for our HR director, who is on a well-deserved vacation. So she would probably do it so much better than I will. But before you tonight is a request to approve modifications to our Lee County Classification and Pay Plan. So these changes do reflect three changes in the community support services, and they will hopefully answer Commissioner Carver's question from earlier. But the first modification is we will be adding the position title of Pretrial and Reentry Manager. So this is to account for the additional job duties that our current pre, reentry coordinator, Ms. Brayboy, will be assuming with this grant position. And so she will also be, she, she was the backup to, to pretrial. But with the changes that were made in July and Ms. Smith becoming the community support services, there is very much a need for some backup and some, some point lead on pretrial as well. So Ms. Brayboy will now be the pretrial and reentry manager. And so she will be keeping some of those higher-level functions of the reentry program, like coordinating the council meetings and doing those, those tasks. And so we've asked for that position title to be added to the pay plan for existing position that already exists in the pay plan. And so that 5% is allocated in the DAC funding to, to, to fund that reclassification. The second one is we would like to take our reentry coordinator position that currently is in our pay plan, is the position that Ms. Brayboy's title is currently, and we are adjusting the job duties to reflect more of a case manager position. This is the position that will be funded by DAC funding. So this is a grant-funded position. And so with grant funds and a new position being allocated by the board, if that grant funding goes away, it could be that the board decides that that position goes away. So just, just, just to kind of let the board know that. So this is the position that will be 100% funding. And then the third request is, if you all recall back in March of 2023, it was the board's request to approve a licensed clinical social worker to work in the community. So the idea is we tried to recruit a licensed clinician that could work from a behavioral health capacity in our community. And when we posted the position, we did not get any applicants. So it came back to the board and the board made the decision to allow us to downgrade that position to a community social worker. And so that was the position that was filled with community support. That position is now vacated and I'm, we are requesting to the board that we make some adjustments in adding a job title of behavioral health clinician into our pay plan in order for us to recruit a licensed clinician and open up the possibility to not just a licensed clinical social worker, but also a licensed clinical mental health counselor, a licensed clinical marriage and family therapist, a licensed clinical addiction specialist. Just allows us, by using the title of behavioral health clinician, it allows us to recruit multiple licensures that can do similar activities so that, in hopes for us to actually recruit and retain a clinician to work in the community support services. What we have seen is, is though, although a non-licensed social worker is valuable, it is very valuable. Where we see the most need is in the clinical aspect, in working with the programs that we are working with. And so before you tonight is the request to add that title to the, the pay plan. And where the ARPA dollars comes in is right now, the position is budgeted in the budget for a community social worker. And what we're do, what we're requesting is, is because the licensed clinical, licensed behavioral clinical clinician, sorry, is one higher grade level, the hope is that we'll be able to recruit a clinician at a higher rate. So there is going to be a paid differential, and we expect that. And so the, the proposal is that we have some ARPA set-aside dollars for mental health and behavioral health, and so that differential will come from there. So, so that's where that comes from. And so I can answer any questions that you might have on those requests for our pay plan modifications.
Question, Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Vorbik?
Just to clarify, you said the pretrial and reentry manager and the reentry coordinator are both funded through the 225,000 from the DAC, correct?
So, so only the reentry coordinator position is fully funded and only 5% of the pretrial and reentry manager position is funded through DAC.
Okay. And then, so the other 95% was already listed in our pay plan?
Correct. And funded, correct.
And funded, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then the licensed clinician is not been, well, we approved the position, but we're changing kind of the scope of what we're going after, so that's already been in a sort of approved play, pay plan, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And then the idea is that, so the reentry coordinator and the 5% of the pretrial reentry manager, that would hopefully be continued to be covered under the DAC for the next three years is the goal?
Yes, that, that is correct.
Now, will, will these, I'm looking, our HR, your HR today, now they will be subject to also COLA or any type of thing that's coming approved, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The, the only caveat really is, is when you fund a position with grant funding, there's always the possibility that that position could go away if grant funding goes away.
Okay.
So it, you know, the commissioners would have to make that decision during the budget process if those funds are no longer available.
Okay. Perfect. And then both of these, I know, positions then report up to Autumn, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And then Autumn reports up to you, correct? Okay. Okay, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick? No questions. Thank you for...
How did the non, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead. How did the non-licensed person function in the job when you had him?
Well, very, very well. So we, you know, the unique thing is, is so what we see is, and I'll give you a specific example, because it might be helpful to, to have that specific example. So social workers in general... example. So social workers in general don't have to be licensed in the state of North Carolina. As a matter of fact, like in, in DSS, for example, which is my background, we do not have any licensed clinicians that work in child protective services or adult protective services. And so they work. They work in resource coordination. They work in, you know, evaluating the community, getting people access to services, things like that. The unique thing that a clinician can do is they can do, you know, psychological assessments. They can actually provide treatment. They can make treatment recommendations. And then their assessment ability just allows them to really coordinate a, a service in a very specific way. And so an example is, you know, we had some challenges with clinicians being able to come into the jail and doing psychological assessments for incompetency purposes. And so what would be an easy solution, it would be is if we had a clinician that we could get them trained, they could do the train, they, they could get the certification that they could perform those assessments for incompetency. You know, it's, it's things like that. And, and they could really work a little bit closer on the assessment side in assessing individuals. You know, we've talked about a lot through working with victims to the DA's office and all of those folks that kind of fall into the gap. A social worker can coordinate services absolutely, and they're extremely valuable. I do not want to diminish the hard work that social workers play because they have a tough job. I know that. You know, the clinician piece just provides a very specific purpose, and that's, that's what's a valuable commodity right now. That's why it was so hard to get someone the first time.
The reason I'm asking the question is I presume this person, the non-licensed one, was doing the 40-hour a week job, or how many ever hours it was. And now we are adding a person that's higher powered and assigning them the potential of being able to do things that this other person wasn't able to do. So are we going to be losing the more hands-on person?
So, so that's a great question. And so the idea is, is where you, where you can kind of combat that is, is in Ms. Brayboy's team in doing the resource coordination. And so this case manager, the reentry coordinator, I, I begged them to use case manager so it wouldn't be so confusing. They wanted to stay with coordinator because they liked coordinator. But this case manager that works, they can, you know, help with a lot of like resource coordination. You know, Ms. Brayboy and, and Ms. Smith as well can help with that resource coordination to kind of take off that burden, because it is a team approach where they can focus a little bit more on providing treatment and services.
I guess I feel that this is the arena where case management in the hands-on level might be able to be done by nonprofits if you maintain a communication with them and, and build-
Sure.
Instead of coming back six months from now and asking for a case manager, go in ahead and using the paradigm that says, if we need these kind of jobs done, we're going to try to appeal to the nonprofits.
Absolutely.
It's just kind of a paradigm, I think.
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion to approve the addition of pre-trial and reentry manager, reentry coordinator, and community behavioral health clinician to Lee County Classification and Pay Plan?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the addition of pre-trial and reentry manager, reentry coordinator, and community behavioral health clinician to the Lee County Classification and Pay Plan. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have two items on the manager's report. We'll go with the August 2024 Monthly Financial Report. Ms. Anna Iceman is coming up.
Good evening. Tonight for you, I have the August 2024 Financial Review. Adblocker tax collections as of August 31st are at 11.78% of the adopted budget. The target for expenditures at this point in the fiscal year would be at 16.67%. There are some departments that remain over that target due to the inclusion of encumbrances. But if those are included, the ones that remain over budget is due to the payment of annual agreements, maintenance, and, and things of that sort.
Questions for Candace? Commissioner Carver?
No.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No questions.
Commissioner Sharp? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is item 7B, Special Comments Regarding Current Situation in the Western Counties.
I was asked to put together a summary of the disaster relief effort being provided by Lee County Government to western North Carolina. We've had some departments that have deployed personnel to help with the relief. That includes our Emergency Management Department and the Sheriff's Office. We've had some departments that have also volunteered employees to be deployed. That includes our Fire Marshal's Office, our Health Department, our Social Services Department. And we also have several departments that have coordinated donations monetarily and item-wise, including IT and tax. Community Support Services is also working with Lee County residents who were in the mountains in recovery programs and returned to Lee County during the emergency, and they're helping with the coordination of temporary services while they're displaced. I also want to note that the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has put together a really good resource page on their website for local governments and the community to be able to reach those resources.
Questions for the manager? Commissioner Carver?
I, I'm just curious about what action this board can take to encourage you to go ahead and tap whoever's willing to volunteer and still protect their income. Is that possible?
I think we're already making those efforts. A lot of the relief that's being provided in the deployment assistance is going to be reimbursable through funds with FEMA. And I have our Emergency Management Director, Matt Britt, is working on coordinating with departments to be able to seek that out. So I think monetarily, it's protected through that, you know, assistance that's being provided. But I think we're already working to exhaust any assistance we can provide.
That's really good. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No, thank you for, for everything Lee County's doing. Thank you.
Commissioner Car, Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Uh, no, I was just gonna mention, maybe we could, or if you could, send out to some of the department heads that are going out there and doing some of those services, just checking on the employees that, when they're coming back, if they're needing any help. I know that the county does have an EAP, but that also takes an extra step of them reaching out to the EAP. But maybe just giving a heads up on if there's anything that they've experienced or witnessed that they might need help with, kind of.
We can incorporate that into a debriefing process.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. We're up for Commissioner comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Sharp.
Yeah, we'd just like to say we continue to pray for western North Carolina. Just looking around town, there's a lot of people participating and sending truckloads, trailers of, you know, goods and, and it's going to be, it's going to have to continue, you know, more than just a one-time thing. This is, this is a bad situation. But I would just say let's continue to pray for, for the folks up there.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
I would just echo that, that this is going to be months, if not years, of recovery, and that we continue to try and keep them in focus as well as praying for this cold front that's coming through and the hurricane that's coming down to South Florida. So I would say that after this, we should all be closed off from any hurricanes moving forward. But just keep everyone that is in the path knowing that it's coming, and that just encouraged by what the community's doing and all the community and the stories that are coming out, so.
Commissioner Connect?
I did the same, and I think, I think it's amazing what you see with North Carolina people doing. It's truly impressive. Keep those in prayer, because then there's a Cat V coming now. I think it's up to Cat V coming to Florida. So prayers, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
Just to echo more on, you know, not beating the dead drum, it is devastating in North Caroli, uh, western North Carolina. I'm proud of what Lee County has done. You know, just a few short years ago, we experienced a terrible tornado through here, and people came together. So I'm proud of what Lee County has done. And I talked with our Emergency Management Coordinator, and he said, you know, that's something that you just can't prepare for, prepare for. But he's learned so much through this in case we ever have anything like that again. So unfortunately, you have to learn a lot during bad circumstances. So in saying that, proud of Lee County for what we're doing, and we need to continue to support our other counties. And just on a side note, personal, thank you again for all the prayers, cards, and all. One more treatment tomorrow.
Awesome.
Thank you, Lord.
Commissioner Carver?
I, I want to comment just in general. First of all, I know I'm leaving, and you all are going to have to solve all these problems. But I, I think there's a lesson learned in this classification and pay study thing and all, all the things that we've done with the reentry council. And that's the fact that, as Commissioner Vorbeck mentioned, they have a tendency to be a little bit top-heavy. But we understand why, because there are regulations, et cetera, that people have to be able to walk through in order to file grants and all that kind of stuff. So the, the train needs an engine, okay? Somebody has to be leading and understand that. At the same time, we're looking at the kind of restrictions that we have coming down the pike here on doing another budgeting year and the pain that comes with the inflation and all that kind of stuff. And I'm wondering if it's worthwhile at the beginning of the budgeting process to consider a little bit of a paradigm shift in this sense. If we identify things that we want to expand the government in, the local government, is it possible to come at it first from the standpoint of how flexible are we to redeploy what we already have, rather than necessarily add a new program? And for a time, kind of hold back on trying to do these kinds of projects, unless we can do them more in-house. The other aspect of it is, is standing up and understanding how to better deploy the nonprofits in the community that can take the brunt of the hands-on kind of things. I know there are a lot of them out there, and I know they're doing a great job. These comments don't have anything to do with disparaging what we've done in the past or what we're looking at right now or tonight. The issue is whether or not our paradigm is, ah, we can fix this problem by establishing a new department, or we can fix this problem by hiring somebody over here. Is it possible to kind of redeploy? And I know that sometimes falls on ears that are not too happy, well, are you asking me to do more work? Yeah, in a sense, for right now, yeah, because in fact, we're kind of in a pretty tough environment. But these kind of choices, I think, have to be made before the budget's written. They have to be laid down as a priority or something, a paradigm that we're going to use while we're doing it. Anyway, I know we work really hard to meet needs. I, I realize that. And we do a great job when we take something on. The question is whether or not we can protect our inflating budget in the meantime. Thanks for listening.
Commissioner Carver, I know you're stepping down, and I do remind you that we do have a strategic plan coming up in January, and we would be looking forward to input from citizens.
Okay.
So keep that in mind, and I'll be rattling your cage later on, okay?
Okay, thank you.
I do want to state that unfortunately, this weekend, I had the opportunity to go to South Carolina near Spartanburg. And unfortunately, the venue we were working at had no electricity and no internet. The first thing you saw when you arrived was these huge oak trees that were collapsed on their power lines. They had replaced the poles. One of the 18th century buildings was damaged by a tree falling on it. But as I got closer and closer to the venue, I saw more and more of the damage as I got closer. And it was just horrifying that we didn't fare too badly compared to the western counties of North Carolina, South Carolina. And I do want to make a note that we have individuals, employees of Central Electric Cooperative, Duke Power, those linemen are out there working. The company that was replacing all the poles on Poplar Springs Church Road, the poles are still laying on the ground because they all toxped up and left to aid the counties in the West. There's a lot of folks out there working, and we appreciate their efforts. I just wanted to emphasize the fact that our law enforcement, our Sheriff's Department, our Emergency Manager Director, and any other volunteers that have left Lee County to go out west to help, and the citizens that have been contributing donations, monetary and substance items and supplies, God bless you. And unfortunately, I got notified this morning, and I will have refugees from Hurricane Milton staying with us. And all I can say is when they said it's a category five, and it's going straight across Florida, I do apologize. It's going to be, it's going to be bad. So without further prayers, I'm sorry, you have something?
Nope.
Prayers, please. Please drive safely, wear your seatbelts, no speeding, and be considerate. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion been made to adjourn. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are now adjourned. Have a good evening.